Hello and welcome to GV Wire's political forum in conjunction with CBAC. For the next hour, we will be talking with candidates for Fresno City Council District 6, which roughly encompasses northeast Fresno. The election is March 5th. If no candidate receives a majority of the vote, the top two will advance to the November 5th general election. I'm your host, David Taub, senior reporter with GV Wire, and I'll be asking questions and hopefully stimulate a meaningful discussion. All candidates have been invited, and I'll introduce them now. Joining us is Molly Fagundis-Johnston. She is a nonprofit advisor. We have Raj Sodhi Lane, she's a banker. And joining us via Zoom is Nicholas Richardson, and you can tell he is a reservist, he is a safety consultant, and we'll be finding out a little bit more about why he's there during the next hour. Roger Bernaktar, an attorney, was invited, but unfortunately he could not attend. The only rule I really have is that we don't talk over each other. I want to have as many responses as we have in the next hour, try to get to as many questions. If you want to jump in, just give me a hand signal, I'll call on you, and we'll have a good discussion. So let's get started. Social justice groups are suing Caltrans over Highway 99 interchanges in an area where industrial parks could be built in south Fresno. The problem with approving industrial parks risks the city of losing these parks to places like Madera and Visalia, and with that, the jobs and the tax revenues that go with them. I believe we have a chart showing just where the job unemployment is. It's been roughly about 7% in Fresno, 7.5% over the last few months. So my question to you is, what do you say on this issue of where we should have these industrial parks? And how far are you willing to go to get it done and battle some of these social justice groups that are litigating? Raj, we'll start with you. Raj Sodhi Lane.
David, when I was served on the Planning Commission, this came up several times, and I actually saw some of the representatives for these social justice groups. I learned later that sometimes they will go out to a neighborhood and make promises, monetary promises. Sometimes they will sue developers, knowing that they may walk away, let's say, with a million-dollar check. We have lost too many businesses already to places like Clovis and Madera and Hanford and Visalia. So we need to do all that we can to make Fresno a business-friendly city and make sure that we can secure those industrial park potential places.
So you're pro-industrial parks?
I am, yes.
And with the, there's going to be litigation, no matter what, it's inevitable. Do you think you're more on the side of settlement? You know, because remember the state and Rob Bonta, the Attorney General, has also intervened to an extent. So settlement, fight him out in court? How do you see this going?
Fight it out in court.
All right. Mrs. Fagundis-Johnston, what do you say about the necessity of industrial parks, getting them in south Fresno, the litigation? What should we do about this?
So I definitely echo what Raj has shared about Fresno being a business-friendly environment, and how do we tackle that goal in mind? Her experience on the Planning Commission, and Planning Commission's shared insight that allows us to see it through a different lens. When it comes to Fresno being a business-friendly environment, we do need to look at why people are choosing to do business elsewhere, whether that's Clovis, Madera, or farther north or south of where we live. So I do think it is imperative that we do have the infrastructure there to support the industrial parks. And collaboration is going to have to be key with all entities to make that a reality.
All right, Nick Richardson, good evening. Hello. Nick, where do you stand on industrial parks in the litigation that's going to come from All right, I think we need to get Nick's audio going. Nick, pause for one sec while we get your audio going. You know, this is the fun of technology. All right, Nick, do we got the audio going? All right, Nick, we will try to, we'll get back to you, Nick, while we try to fix this audio. I know we had a very dedicated technical crew. So one more question to...
Roger.
All right, Nick, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me?
There we go. All right, Nick, we're talking about industrial parks, lawsuit going on at least where the freeway interchanges should go on Highway 99. Industrial parks, they bring tax revenue, they bring jobs. Do you support that? And how do you get through this litigation?
I'm tracking. Thanks for the question, David. And I'd like to preface with two things. One, I'm obviously, I'm out here in the wilds of Camp Pendleton. I have to be in this because of, for safety reasons. Everything I'm about to say represents my opinions, not the opinions of the United States Marine Corps or the Department of Defense. That was my mandatory disclaimer. That being said, honestly, the ladies who spoke before me are very intelligent as well in this, in this subject. They have answers, and I think we're all going to agree on this. If Fresno starts to adopt a policy that prevents businesses from operating and giving jobs, letting people sustain meaningful, you know, employment, then we're going to find ourselves on the losing end of that very quickly. So if it's litigation that has to happen, if California wants to write some settlements or what have you, I say we listen. But at this point, our priority needs to be jobs to keep people paid, keep people in houses.
And Nick, I know there's going to be, on the city council that you may join, the question may come up, well, is there anywhere in District 6 that an industrial park could go? So is there, and would you, should industrial parks just be confined to the south of Fresno, you know, the area they call the triangle?
No, I feel like it's not applicable to the question. The question started with the 99, the 99 doesn't touch District 6 at any point.
Right, but industrial parks in general, is there anywhere in District 6?
Yes, potentially, there's a, there's a, there's a place, I can think, right on Fryent 41, there's a potential there for development of an industrial park. I have to look at the coding. I'm not sure if it's registered for, or correction, if it's zoned for an industrial park, I'm pretty sure that's commercial over there. And what they'd be able to get away with, that would be a little bit different than I think what we're talking about as far as industrial parks in the vicinity of these interchanges around the 99.
Right, and to Raj and Molly, the answer, you know, in the city council you join says, well, what about your district? Would you be willing to accept an industrial park and everything that comes with it in District 6?
Yes, yes. District 6 is, I don't know, I can't think of a place right off the top of my head, but there must be, and I don't know what the minimum footage is to define an industrial park, but if there is a place, it should be considered.
Molly, what do you say?
I'm on board with that. Yeah, I was thinking of like Herndon, north of Herndon area, but Fryent 41 would probably be best accessibility with all the growth right now. But it would go down to what Nick alluded to, area as far as what this is owned for.
Right, and sticking with the land use issue, how do we alleviate the housing shortage in Fresno? You know, where should market rate, affordable homes, residential apartments, shelters go? And how would you handle neighbors, neighborhood objections to propose multifamily housing projects? So Molly, where do we go with housing? How do you handle...
That's a big question. I think there are seven questions within that one question. Okay, so you talked about housing shortage, right? Was that the first part of it?
Yeah.
Okay. So we do see housing shortage more so now in the valley. What we're seeing is people from northern and southern California, LA and San Francisco, are moving to the central valley. What's really interesting, when you look at this situation, statewide, we have declining enrollment for schools, but we don't have that going on in the central valley. So that shows and tells us that we have families that are coming to the valley because of the quality of life and the affordability. Where are these people living is another question. And when you look at housing, not only in District 6, but in the rest of the city, this is a great question to ask.
So where in the district do you put, what kind of housing where?
Specifically, like are you asking for the classification? Because you also brought in homelessness.
Right, right. I mean, there are obviously all types of housing, and talking about District 6 here. So do you think we need a mix of residential, multifamily, affordable? How do you get these built in District 6?
Well, there is a combination of all those different types of housing that you recently proposed. And so what we're seeing in north Fresno is multiple developments as far as Copper River. I'm thinking north, that are different variety of homes, multi-generational homes are becoming another option that we're also seeing south of Fresno as well. And I think you also asked about homelessness, if we should put those individuals...
You know, would you be okay with shelters in District 6?
Well, homelessness is a big issue, not only in District 6. When I was reviewing the budget for Fresno, reality is the city doesn't have resources right now for the homeless population, and they have come from the state. And so I'm sure we're all aware of the state budget and what that looks like, not just one year out, but really like the next two to three years. So homelessness is going to have to be addressed. What is currently being done in Fresno, we have a multitude of nonprofits and faith-based organizations that are working together.
Okay, let me rephrase this. Should shelters be built in District 6? Would you be okay with that?
I know that, I want to find a home for the homelessness as far as a shelter in District 6. I'm not even thinking of an area that would be a good opportunity for that.
All right, let's go to Camp Pendleton with Nick Richardson. Nick, housing crunch. How do you kind of build all these types of housing in Fresno? And how do you handle the people who can object to places like apartment complexes in District 6?
So let me address both those parts here. One, there are already issues with multifamily housing in District 6. You can look up on the north side of Copper, there's an apartment complex going in that doesn't, first of all, the price doesn't really allocate itself for the demographic they're targeting, and that ends up putting more people into each unit than is specified. That becomes a multifamily, or at very least, an overpopulated unit. Now, they haven't provided the parking for that, and we're already getting complaints from the citizens over there. I've talked to many constituents who live right there off Chestnut, right there on Copper, who are concerned about where that parking is going to go and how that's going to affect them. So from a planning side, we need to make sure the infrastructure to include parking is sufficient enough for those multifamily houses. Now, when it comes to how are we going to make housing applicable to people, right? Because I personally don't think that shelters are the answer. Shelter is just putting a bigger bucket under a leaky pipe to catch more water. You're not fixing the problem. In my job as being a security consultant, you can't just put a Band-Aid on something and call it good. You've got to fix the source of the problem, find what the root cause is, and fix that. So we're trying to increase the housing availability in the city. A couple of things that we can do is open up places, including some in District 6, for some affordable housing. This doesn't necessarily have to be Section 8. You can go on, if you Google Fresno housing, you can find all of the stipulations that apply to someone who owns a house, right, a landowner, or the, the correction, the landlord, and the rules they have to abide by. A couple of those make it a little strict and stringent for someone to provide that housing under Section 8 policies. I think specifically Rule 31 and 38 are the two I'm thinking of. You can go back and check those out, it's a single checklist. But if we were to have housing, and maybe it's due to a conditional use permit that we have to push through, if we were to provide some affordable housing in somewhere in District 6, say, on First and Herndon, the northwest corner of First and Herndon, there's a large developable property there that doesn't directly abut any residential areas. I don't see anyone having an issue with that. And you know what? If someone does, we're willing to listen to them. I am willing to listen to them. I will hear their complaints, and maybe there's a solution we can come to together. But as far as making houses across the board in District 6 and in other districts affordable for people, we can do things like revise the fact that the city has these project labor agreements that are so heavily pro-union, it's actually costing developers more to develop this land. And as we know, when it costs more to build something, it costs more to sell it. That drives up the price, and although you have more housing potentially available, it's going to cost more for everyone else. So if we keep these policies in place, these project labor agreements that make it harder for developers to build cheaply, then they have to be more specific with where they choose to build, reducing the supply of housing. And when you reduce the supply, you raise the cost, you make it less accessible for the people who need it.
All right, Nick, thanks. Raj, what's your housing plan? And kind of interesting about this PLA concept, let's first talk about housing. What's your plan?
So the state of California has a housing shortage. Fresno has a housing shortage. As far as affordable, the interest rates are coming down again. So, you know, a lot of us have, let's say, a 3%, 4% interest rate. We don't want to leave and get into a 6% rate, right? But with the interest rates coming down, hopefully there will be some movement there. I say for every affordable housing project, let's fast-track that permit application down at the planning department. And I don't know if we have that in process today.
We've heard every candidate say, oh, let's make the planning, that the process easier. You know, they even tried, you know, the money-back guaranteed program a few years ago, that failed.
Right.
So how are you going to do something that's different?
Affordable housing projects for the entire city could be something that the city council could agree on and make it a priority, since it is such an issue for us, right? When it comes to housing, we should consider all different types of housing, such as you might have a commercial property with retail on the first floor. Could we consider alternate, you know, it doesn't have to be a three-bedroom, two-bath home, not everybody needs that. So I think we need to consider different types of housing for different individuals.
Right, and how are you going to handle the objections when you want to build a big apartment complex somewhere in Fresno in District 6? How are you going to handle the people who object to that?
So we already have big apartment complexes in Fresno. Let's look at the row at Willow and Shepherd. I was in shock when I read that there are individuals coming in from the Bay Area, a couple, empty nesters perhaps, and they don't want a big backyard to maintain. So they're fine paying $2,800, $2,900 a month for a two-bedroom apartment. So we already have them. Like Nick mentioned, we've got large apartment complexes being built at Copper and Fryent right now. So we have a variety of housing in District 6 as we speak. I was going to say...
Well, let me move on real quick. Just want to get a quick response, both of you, something that Nick mentioned about project labor agreements, which is an agreement that the city has with a union for, right now, projects over a million dollars. You know, a city used to actually ban them, but they had to reverse that in order to get more state money. Real quick, where do you stand on PLAs? Should they stay as where they are, or should something change? Raj?
I would like to see something change. I come from a world where the banking industry is very competitive, and a client will come to us and say, you know what, I'm going to put out an RFP to four other banks. It puts everybody on notice.
Molly, real quick, PLAs, where you stand?
Yeah, I think we need to have a conversation about the PLA agreement and the impact that it does have on development in Fresno.
All right. Molly Fagundis-Johnston, city will soon debate whether to raise garbage rates. So he says the garbage department, the utilities running at a deficit, they haven't, prices haven't raised in 15 years or so. So where do you stand on the issue? If you were voting, would you say, yes, we need to raise garbage rates, or no?
So the last number I saw floated was 78% increase. I think that was something that has been out there in the media. So that's really excessive rate as far as when you look at the last time that the rates did get increased. Of course, I am definitely not for any new additional taxes for anyone. So there's a reason why that number's so high. But to answer your question, no, I would not support, the number being floated right now is 78%, that's the last number.
Okay, so where does the money come from to alleviate this deficit?
I think regardless, there is going to be, there's going to be an increase, but is it going to be 78%? I don't think that's realistic right now.
So do you got services? Do you just, we can't get that truck this year? I mean, something's got to give, so what's your solution?
What is my solution? I would definitely do a deeper dive within the numbers and see, go back to the why as far as that number that I've already shared, and identify if we are using the resources to the best of their, how efficient are we being? I know talking to constituents, some of them aren't even having their garbage picked up on the day when it's supposed to be. So I know there's already challenges in the channel right now. And that's the most common issue I've heard, sort of float an increase when they're not even getting their trash picked up in a timely manner.
All right, Raj, how do you fix this deficit? Do you raise the rates? Do you alter services? How do you handle this?
If I could, could I just quickly add one more comment about, about housing?
Real brief.
Real brief. So we've seen since COVID, huge empty office buildings, right? I'll use Shaw as an example, but that's not the only example. They're all over. I think we need to explore some type of interim housing. And again, I wouldn't know how cost-effective that is, but we've got a lot of empty, large office buildings.
Office buildings for housing, now to garbage rates.
Garbage. So initially, when this interest rate, this percentage increase was presented, and it was presented at 78%, and then I realized that we haven't had a garbage increase since 2009, right? And then some of the increase is due to labor costs, fuel costs, and then, you know, the fees to actually take it elsewhere. So let's say that I'm paying, and I don't remember the gallons, 64 gallons or a 96 gallon, but, but the increase is supposed to be a gradual increase over five years. So I will only see, if we vote on this, and I think we're going to see something in May, May 18th, and then, and then if it gets approved, I would only see a $5 increase per month.
So you're okay with approving that?
Yes. Once I realize that it's not 78% or whatever, $5, and I haven't had an increase since 2009, and it's crucial that my garbage get picked up on a weekly basis, I can save that $5 elsewhere.
Okay. Nick Richardson, Molly says no, Raj says he's okay with it. Where are you standing on the garbage rates? How would you vote? How would you solve this problem?
Well, honestly, David, it's a lack of creativity from those who are in city council who are entrusted to make these decisions. Now, I'll give you some numbers. Just the money that the city of Fresno pays to use the landfills, which belong to the county, every year, I just checked the last budget, let me give you a number on this. So the number, the amount of money the city paid, not including Measure P money, that's also going to landfill use, $8,977,700, almost $9 million. Once you factor in Measure P money, it's about $9.5 million. That much money was paid by the city of Fresno to the county of Fresno just to use the landfills. So when it comes to trash itself, you can either take that money out of the backs of the people who just need to get rid of their garbage, or you can start taking some responsibility, cut a deal with the county, lower the rates the city's paying to use those landfills, and you're going to reduce the cost of the trash pickup to everyone else. Assuming a population of 500,000 people, that's an increase of, just to cover that much money, that would save everyone $19.50, right there. $19.50 from that increase. So talking about a $5 increase, I get where that number would come from, but the city needs to make sure they're exhausting all of their diplomatic and accounting possibilities before they go try to impose a tax on new people just to take out their trash.
You're saying more negotiation? And Nick, I'm sorry, you mentioned Measure P, you're talking about the parks tax? I'm sorry, can you clarify what you meant by when you say Measure P?
Specifically under Measure P, if you look under the budget, there are Measure P-specified landfill use fees that the city is required to use. They're using the same landfills, they're still county landfills. The important number there is, it's hovering right between just under $9 million and about $9.5 million just for the city to dump its trash at the landfills, the approved landfills that belong to the county.
All right, Nick. All right, Nick, some personal questions now for our candidates. Obviously, we see you're a reservist. Tell us a little bit about your background, your military career, and you can list yourself as a safety consultant. Tell us about your business.
Sure. So I had the privilege after college, once I graduated in 2013, to join the United States Marine Corps. I commissioned as a second lieutenant on May 15th of that year. I went and flew combat helicopters for the Marine Corps for about a decade, switched over to the infantry toward the end, became an air liaison for them, and I've been living the ground life ever since then. So I got off active duty in 2022, moved home. Obviously, I've stayed in touch, got back home to be with my family, to take the next step with my fiance, which we're really excited about, to come back home to District 6. So now, currently in the reserves, I owe one weekend a month. We take some months off, and in the summer, we go on a quick trip somewhere around the world to go spread democracy and buy camera legislatures, doing some joint training with our allies. This summer, I was in Africa doing some interpreting, as I also linguist, and also controlling some fires of some joint nations there. So I'll stay a reservist until I get sick of it, or until my obligation's up. But once I move back home, join the reserve side, you asked about the company. So I do have an LLC. I am, from my time in the Marine Corps, I was also an aviation safety officer. I would investigate mishaps that military aircraft experience. From that training in fire science, metallurgy, human factors, things of that nature, aerodynamics and all that, I now go around the world and I will investigate mishaps that happen to companies, very safety-focused. We will train new investigators to be able to look into issues, whether it's, you know, Timmy gets his foot run over by a forklift, or Jane drops a $50,000 camera, or there's an explosion at a chemical factory. I've kind of investigated or been a part of investigations to each one of those. Another thing we do is we build leadership programs at companies that have difficulties with either retention, hiring processes, vertical movement, or just production. And to go around and talk to individuals who have never been in the military and teach them about leadership, effective communication, assuming responsibility, accountability for your actions and for the people around you, that's what my business does, and I'm very happy to have that on the side. It's been a great opportunity for me, and I'm able to fit that in with my reserve duty.
And the name of your business? What's the name of your business?
Rich, my first initial and first four letters of my last name.
All right. Molly, tell us, we list you as a nonprofit advisor. What does that mean, and what do you do?
Sure. So I have a background in philanthropy advancement. I spent over six years at Valley Children's as a major gift officer, so I got to represent Valley Children's and be a part of a major capital campaign down in Kern County. And I also have development prior to that at Fresno State for the Sid Craig School of Business. So really passionate about organizations and groups coming together to raise funds for a variety of causes. After my time at Valley Children's, I really wanted to go out on my own, and it gave me the autonomy and a flexibility to choose the nonprofits that I want to work with and the missions that I'm really most proud of. So if you look at the valley, and it's just not a valley issue, it's actually a national-wide issue, most of your, a lot of your nonprofits cannot afford a full-time development person. So whether it's a major gift officer, a grant specialist, someone that needs help with a capital campaign, so that's where I come in on a contract base. The name of my business is Fagundis and Johnston Enterprises, I hyphen my name. And so I get to vet the nonprofits, they get to vet me. Most of them are short-term contracts, some have turned into greater opportunities down the road based on specifically what the organizational needs are. And so my job is working with nonprofits.
Raj, you're a banker, tell us about that.
Oh, I've been in banking 40 years. Started out as a teller in Atwater for a company called Guarantee Savings, which was a family-owned savings and loan. Moved to Fresno from Atwater in 1988, so 35 years ago. I feel blessed that I have been able to interact and work with so many different types of people, because you never know who's walking in the door. Could be a student, it could be a parent opening up savings accounts for their children, it could be a young couple looking to become homeowners, it could be a small business owner looking to start their business and get a small line of credit. And today, I've, I work with corporate clients and primarily the controllers and CFOs of those companies. It has taught me a lot, but also it has given me the opportunity to be involved in my community. My parents raised me to work hard, serve your community, and to remember God. And so banking allowed me to be a member of East Fresno Rotary for almost 15 years, and then I served on the board of the Boys and Girls Clubs of Fresno County. And from there, I started to get involved with the Chamber and did the Leadership Fresno Program, Class 33. In fact, we were going to solve the homeless issue back in 2017. And I'm just grateful for the opportunity and the growth that this, this industry has given me, because you can do 20 different jobs within banking.
Sure, and the next job you want to be is a city council member. So let's get back into the issues. into the issues. The city and the county do not have a tax sharing agreement, expired in 2020, and without this agreement, it's hard for the city to permit new development, especially homes. So how do you solve it? You know, this city-county relationship's always been a little shaky for a while. We always see the city and county leaders take snipes at each other. How do you assess this relationship, and how do you fix this tax sharing agreement, Raj?
So I don't take, what's the word you use, snipes at people? Yeah. I think that comes from my customer service background. I told somebody the other day, I said, "I'm not here to lose clients. This is not the Bank of Raj. I'm here to listen, provide solutions, solve problems," right? I have a good working relationship with several of the current county board of supervisors, Sal Quintero, Buddy Mendez, who endorsed me, Brian Pacheco, Nathan Magzig. So I think it's just a matter of coming to the table, talking like adults. And, you know, you're in Rotary. Rotary has taught us to bring people to the table. Is it always fair? No. Should it be the truth? It should be the truth. Will it always beneficial everyone? No. But will it provide goodwill and better understanding? Yes.
All right, Nick Richardson, how do you solve the tax sharing agreement? There hasn't been one in three-plus years. Development isn't getting developed because of this. How do you solve it?
It's give and take, David. It's all give and take. I mean, that's what negotiation is. So, there are things on the city side, and this is the same reason I think I'd work well with a lot of the city councillors, who may be a different political party than myself or have other interests. It's all give and take. So if we're able to provide something for the county, let's say, for example, that within the county limits, we're able to build a bigger jail for the sheriff's department to be able to provide them to do their jobs successfully, that's going to be a, not necessarily a favor, but that is a show of goodwill, that is a show of cooperation with the county, that in turn, they're going to be willing to work with us back on things. And I'm sure, once we get there, behind the doors of City Hall, and kind of all the papers come out, and, you know, we start reading through all the books and really getting into the, getting into the job, we're going to be able to find more of those things that we can do for the county to increase the partnership. Are there some places the city doesn't pull its weight when it comes to helping the county? Sure. Are there some places where the county doesn't pull its weight helping the city? Probably. But it's all give and take.
And Molly, you know, how do you think the lack of a tax sharing agreement's affected development in District 6? How do you solve it?
This came up, I think it was on Monday or Tuesday, when you had the forum with the District 2 Board of Supervised Candidates. So that was really interesting to hear their perspective and as far as how they're going to tackle it. The fact that we haven't had one in three years is probably concerning for most, and so I definitely feel that what we're trying to accomplish is a one Fresno. And so with that being our ultimate goal, we need to have these conversations. I was at the Chamber luncheon today in Clovis, and I saw just as many Fresno people as I did Clovis, both in the business and nonprofit space. So, for me, we are working together, and we need to continue to work to overcome this challenge right now that unfortunately impacts not only Fresno City Council, but the board as well.
All right. Another challenge in District 6, the La Hacienda Mobile Home Park, the embattled mobile home park. There's been problems with the owners. There's been a problem with the fires a couple of years ago that really brought this all to light. One idea being floated in the city is that the city actually take over the park, whether they buy it outright or some other method. So Molly, we'll start with you. How do you solve the issue with La Hacienda? A lot of eviction notices, residents have been coming to city council, asking for help. What kind of help do you deliver?
Some of those conversations have circled around public safety as well with this mobile park. So to answer your question as far as what we do, there's many stakeholders that are part of this challenge right now, and I look at those people that live there. Some of those residents, they're renting, they don't own their actual mobile home. So it's a really unique situation with the dichotomy there, and it is a challenge. Many in District 6 have definitely conveyed how they feel about it specifically and what they would like to see done.
So what would you do as a city councilwoman?
What I would do, representing District 6, you are the eyes, you're the ears, and you're the feet for the voters, and those individuals that live there are, they're part of District 6. So it involves a variety of people. To answer your question, I would sit down with all stakeholders and understand where they're coming from and try-
Okay, well, the owners say, "We need more rent, otherwise we're pulling out." The people who live there say, "We can't afford that. We're getting evicted." What do you think of the idea of the city buying that space, buying that park? Do you favor that?
Do I think the city should buy the complete, the whole unit? Well, I'm looking at the budget situation right now. Do I think that they should buy La Hacienda Mobile Park? I don't, I don't think they should buy La Hacienda Mobile Park.
All right, Raj, these people are in need. They keep coming to city council saying, "Help." How do you help them, and should the city take over?
I do not support our city taking over and trying to rescue, because if you do it today, it's going to come up again six months, if not sooner. I don't think our city should be buying private properties. I understand that there are residents that live there, and so we together need to find alternate solutions for them, whether it's housing elsewhere, whether, you know, nonprofits coming in, churches coming in. But no, I am not a supporter of the city buying private property.
Right. And a related issue, and I'll ask everybody else this too, rent control. Is that something you'd support?
So the current state rent control limit is 10%, total, right? So, I'm in favor of that limit.
Okay, so you want to say the same, right?
Yeah.
All right. Nick, let me first ask you about La Hacienda. There's a problem. What do you think the solution should be? Should the city take over?
So the city taking over without a follow-on plan is a recipe for failure. It is. That's getting into something that's really committing, that's running the first 100 miles of a race, and then kind of wondering what you're going to do from there. Unless the city has a better plan than that, a very specific plan that's already approved, I think, as alluded to before by my competitor there, I think it's a recipe for disaster. Now, there are a couple of things we can do. These people want housing. They want affordable housing, and just because they moved in somewhere where the landlord has made some bad decisions, and maybe it's an unsafe scenario, that shouldn't be taken out on them. So the city buying it outright, I want to exhaust every other option first, because I don't think that's the right answer. We can see, since obviously the raise of rent is going to be an issue for them with affordability, why don't we see if La Hacienda qualifies for some Section 8, some subsidies there? If it can qualify, all the Section 8 subsidies, they can get their housing coupons, they can stay in the same place, and the landowner is able to raise rent to a point where the landowner will still make money, the landlord, with that subsidy from the state, not from the city, that might be an option for them. But until we start getting more affordable housing, Section 8 aside, in the city, those people are going to be stuck where they are. So if it comes down to them organizing, forming some sort of HOA, and coming to a deal with the landowner, I would like that, but at this point, I don't think the city buying it outright without further planning is the right move. I think it's a recipe for failure.
And for those-
I'll talk about your second question.
Yeah. What do you say on rent control?
Hey, I rent. I get it. Rent control by itself sounds fantastic. It sounds like it's going to benefit the renter themselves, and everything will be great, and they'll never have to pay anymore, and the landlord can, if they don't like it, they can go kick rocks. That's not the case. Rent control is probably going to have a very positive effect for the first, I would guess, 12 months. I'm not a prognosticator on this, but what's going to happen is you're going to start seeing landlords or individuals who, you know, they want to build an apartment complex, they want to build some townhomes, you're going to start seeing them back out of that, or start building more expensive individual family houses, because it's untenable with the rent control. So like Raj says, keeping rent where, the control where it is at 10%, okay, I think that's probably sufficient for now, but the fact that renters aren't able to maintain paying their rent every single month, rent control's not going to fix that. It's going to lower the supply of homes in District 6 and the rest of Fresno, and more people are going to find themselves out on the streets, which should be one of our goals to prevent in the first place.
All right, Molly, I'll let you wrap this up. Where are you going? Where do you stand on that rent control?
I'm aware of the 10%, and I'm fine with that.
All right. Molly, because you're wearing Fresno State colors, I'm going to ask you this one first. Measure E, it's going to also be on the March 5th ballot? It's going to be a 1/4% sales tax that would benefit Fresno State? We know the mayor supports it. Where do you stand on Measure E?
I voted no for Measure E the first time, and I plan to vote no this time. I am a two-time Bulldog grad. I volunteer with several different groups at Fresno State. We support the university in a variety of ways, College of Ag, Bulldog Foundation. When I look at this specific issue, and if you look at the language of Measure E and the overall makeup of this measure, I'm a no against it. I look at residents all over our city that are struggling right now. They're struggling with main issues that we've discussed today, and Measure E, it's a tax increase.
All right. What do you say, Nick Richardson? Measure E, yes or no?
As a fiscal conservative, my default is no new taxes, but be very specific with this. You can go on and look on my webpage, if you go to nicksgotmysix.com. I specifically put what my stance was, and I said no to Measure E. I was opposed to it. Reason being, it was vague. If you're going to impose a tax on the city, it needs to be something the citizens of the city are going to see the effects of. And with that vague wording, it could have gone to a new jacuzzi in the women's 50-meter pistol shoot locker room, it could have gone to a new mural in the men's volleyball locker room, and none of us would ever see the result of that, and we'd be footing the bill. So I was opposed to Measure E, and I left that on my website. Now, the wording has been changed. It's been rewritten, and they're specifically focusing that money that's going to come in on jobs, in particularly the nursing and the engineering programs. Now, knowing that that money is going to go to train people to do jobs that we are sorely in need of in Fresno, hey, I'm about jobs. And if those individuals can graduate from Fresno State with that training, stay in the area, bring jobs, and allow more businesses to come to Fresno, I can be down with that. So, I have updated my stance, although I was against Measure E originally because of vague and I feel like misleading wording. Now, I can get behind Measure E. I will likely be voting yes on that.
All right, Raj, we heard a no, we heard a yes.
So, I'm very sensitive to the cost of living for young families today, right? The cost of their gas, the cost at the grocery store, our property taxes. So unfortunately, at this time, I would vote no on Measure E.
All right. Thanks, Raj. Next issue, something that we've seen a lot at City Hall in the last couple of months, particularly since October 7th. Where do you stand on the Israel-Hamas war, and what do you think about the calls for a formal ceasefire that some residents from pro-Palestinian supporters want? If you're on the city council, would you support a ceasefire?
Very sensitive topic, obviously, because we have neighbors that are affected by this. I want to preface by saying that I am grateful that I get to live in a country where I have freedom of speech, and I get to wear the clothes that I wear, and I can go out and get an education. We all know that all countries don't operate the way our country does. We have a, what I will call Safe Place, which is our Unity Park, our Eaton Plaza, where people have the right to that freedom of speech. And so I think, I think the city council needs to focus on things that affect all citizens within that district and the city.
So you would not call for a ceasefire resolution?
I would not call for a ceasefire resolution. I have no problem with a resolution.
Okay, what would a resolution you would propose, what would that say?
I, I really liked what Mayor Dyer said, that we all that live here, and we are a very diverse city, as everybody knows, a very diverse district as well on top of that. And I think we should all be sensitive to people's feelings and their thoughts, but I don't think the city council, or the state government, or the federal government, you know, we're not the United Nations, so our, our-
So I'm here in different, I do want a resolution, but the resolution, so yes or no, and it's some kind of resolution on this issue, and if yes, what would it look like for you?
For the resolution? So, in support of those that have concerns about what's happening over there.
Well, you have to pick a side. I mean, you're going to tick off somebody, no matter what you do.
Yes. You will never please 100% of the people 100% of the time.
Especially on this issue.
Especially on this issue.
So if, I'm still just wondering what a Raj Sodillane resolution on Israel-Hamas would look like?
I'm not exactly sure, but I'm not opposed to a resolution.
As a city councilperson-
What's that?
All right, Nick, what do you guys say?
As a city councilperson, what's your solution for the Israel-Palestine conflict?
Right.
Well, people calling for a resolution, do you think that's something the city council should do? And if you think so, what would a resolution that Nick Richardson would propose?
So, I joined the Marine Corps to bring peace, all right? I don't like war. If I could stop the killing tomorrow, if I could write a resolution that for some reason, let's picture the United Nations is waiting on Fresno, California to make their decision.
We know that. It's symbolic, we know that. But it matters to the people.
That's nonsense. And you know what matters to the people, like you mentioned, is knowing that here in Fresno, their conflicts 8,000 miles away are not going to follow them back. They need to know that wearing a hijab, or a niqab, or a yarmulke, or a cross, or anything, isn't going to, it's not going to be affected in Fresno. They're going to have their First Amendment rights to express their religion. So if I were to sign, propose a resolution, it would be condemning the actions of Hamas that were illegal. It would be condemning any violations of international law committed by Israel, and assuring everyone in Fresno that city council is here to make their home safe for all of them, not to isolate one side, not to take sides, not to fly the flag of any one country over City Hall or over city property that isn't the American flag, that of California, or that of Fresno. If I signed a resolution to say that, yeah, I would totally agree with that. I'd author it myself.
All right, Molly, is city council the right place to have any kind of resolution? And if so, what would the Molly Fagundis-Johnson resolution look like?
Absolutely not. I've been attending city council meetings for over a year now, and I have found that this conversation and dialogue, I don't even feel it's a Fresno city issue. I don't know if you've been attending the city council meetings the past year, but it has been extremely disruptive when this comes up. And if you go back to what the mayor says about one Fresno, we're here to represent the city of Fresno. That's what we're here and to focus on those issues. So to answer your question, no, I would not support a ceasefire, the city council implementing one.
Right. Would any type of resolution support one side or the other?
No.
Would you be against it? Is it just because you don't think that's the city council's place?
I don't think this issue is something that city council should be spending effort or time on. I mean, look at, we haven't even talked about the reserves, which are at 10%. It's almost $46 million. That was really good news. You're in the banking business, so, I mean, there's a lot of positives. And when I look at just the communication and the dialogue that has happened at these meetings and in our city, I feel it's very disruptive. It's sad when you look at the loss of lives that have happened all across the board, but specifically to answer your question about a ceasefire, no, I do not support Fresno City Council implementing one.
All right. Raj, transparency has been an issue at city council. I've done a lot of reporting where all these secret votes are taking place for settlements, for this, that. Recently, the city right now is under a lawsuit over the Budget Subcommittee. So how, as a city council member, what do you think about transparency, and would you accept taking these votes in closed session and not reporting them out?
So I was very pleased to read or see that Annalisa Perea is already addressing the transparency issue, and has, has, you know, has dealt with it, and she wants transparency. She has said so, the Subcommittee. So I have, I have faith in that she's going to do what she said that she's going to do.
Right.
Did that answer your question?
I guess. So you're saying, whenever we take a vote in a closed session, it must be reported out? No shenanigans?
Right. And I come from an industry, as you know, of policy and procedure. We are audited heavily. So, that's my background. I wouldn't do it any differently at City Hall.
Nick, how would you rate the transparency of this Fresno City Council, and what would you do to change things if you think things need to be changed?
Honestly, I mean, at the risk of a gaudy metaphor, open the- Honestly, I mean, at the risk of a, of a gaudy metaphor, open the kimono, David. The City Council's been put there by the city to make decisions for them. If you're making a decision for them and unwilling to tell them what that decision is, then you're not making decisions for them, you're making decisions for you. I think that's, that's just inherently, if it's not dishonest, it's shady, and I'm running to chase that out of local government, to chase the shadiness, the deceit, and the behind-the-doors dealings out of our local government, because people don't deserve that.
Molly Fugenis-Johnson, I'll just say you're in City Council. A vote is taken in closed session to settle some kind of lawsuit, but they don't immediately report it out for this or that or the other reason. What do you do?
Well, all the votes that I'm aware of, we can all look these, this information up and the votes. So I believe in full transparency. I have actually called on our current council member, because I go to these meetings and I see other council members having sidebar conversations, or leaving their chairs to talk, and I find that very disruptive and actually rude to the members that are there. That is one thing that I've shared with our current council member, but you can look up all the votes, and we know exactly where City Council votes on these issues.
Well, that's the point. You can't look up all the votes if they don't reveal them. So if you're in that situation, do you say, "You know what? I'm going to reveal publicly how we voted in closed session," or do you go along with the line of whatever advice you get not to?
Full transparency.
Okay. All right. Nick, we'll take, you take this next one. What does District 6 need that's not getting right now?
What does District 6 need that it's not getting right now? District 6 needs, in my opinion, from walking over 22,000 houses, they need a sense of security. You can, you walk to houses, I mean, look at the neighborhood that I grew up in over on Maplewood International. You walk to places that have traditionally been very safe, and now you've got the houses surrounded by security cameras, they've got double dead locks, they've got security doors, warning of, you know, dog warning, they've got Ring cameras. People don't feel safe, and that's not just physical safety at their homes, they don't feel safe in their jobs. That feeling of safety and security, the fact that where you live is a cooperation of the people around you for the safety and security and welfare and well-being, that's what District 6 needs, to be honest with you.
And do you think the police, do you think they have what they need? Do you think fire has, public safety has what they need to get their job done to create that sense of safety?
Absolutely not. And they've told me, and they tell you as well. I mean, and that, that has a lot of different forms, and if you'd like to go into that specifically, I can talk about either of those, either of those first response services.
Take a moment to say what they need.
No, they don't have what they need.
Yeah. So take a moment to say what you think they need and not getting. Go ahead.
Okay. We'll start with fire here. The fire department, in order to give those people those safety and security, they need to be able to respond to the calls they get in a timely manner and be able to handle the load of calls that they're getting. Now, the city's doing them a disservice as we extend the example that was used by the fire department specifically in southeast Fresno, in the Sunnyside area. As development continues, the city's done such a poor job of reinforcing the infrastructure behind those houses to make sure that the ratio of firefighter to home services by that firefighter maintains tenable. As we continue building out and we just expand the jurisdiction of the fire department, to say, "Hey, instead of, you know, these 500 homes, now you cover these 5,000 homes. Sorry, deal with it, we'll give you another firefighter to cram into your eight-man house. Hope it helps." So people don't feel safe if they know that that's what their first responders are going through.
All right, Nick. Hold on, real, let me interject for a sec. So would you increase the budget for more public safety? I mean, it's already half, at least going to police of the general funds. Do you think there should be more?
For police and fire, I refuse to sign a budget that takes a dollar or doesn't increase their budgets, period. And there's, I mean, there's almost $90 million that we can look at, or sorry, there's $22.9 million just that I saw, not being an accountant, looking through the last budget that was poorly allocated, that could have been allocated to them. You could have fixed the comm issues, the communication issues that police departments suffering from. We could have built another fire station on, you know, Broadway and Elizabeth with that money to be able to let them service the homes in that area. No, I absolutely think they are, they're supplied not the material, not the care to include mental health and physical health care, and not the pay they need to retain them in the city and allow them to continue servicing and making those people feel safe.
All right. Thanks, Nick. Molly, what's District 6 need that's not getting right now?
What does District 6 need? I love District 6. I want to be able to feel safe and go to Keith Tice Park with our three young boys and not worry that my husband has to go with us every time. So that's something that's important to me. I feel overall, people in District 6, they don't want to see the homelessness. We want to find a place and a home, and a safe place. It's not just a homelessness issue, it's also a public safety issue, so it does tie into police and fire. But you specifically asked, what does it need? I feel that we need to look at homelessness because we do see homelessness in our area, and as far as public safety, that is a concern among constituents that does come up regularly.
I'm going to talk about homelessness. I mean, you didn't sound convinced that a shelter in District 6 was appropriate, so what do you do about homelessness if you don't want a shelter in that area?
We've been trying to solve this one forever, so if you have the answer, you've got to run for City Council.
But you're the one running for City Council.
I know. And it is a, it's a puzzle approach. So your question was, what does District 6 need? So do you want me to focus on homelessness now, or?
You're the candidate. You tell, homelessness, you know, you say that's, that's something that needs to be solved in District 6 that it needs.
Absolutely. I mean-
Okay, how?
Absolutely. So the way that you solve homelessness is you look at why people end up homeless, and that is for a variety of reasons. I actually had a colleague whose brother was homeless, and she was very transparent and shared, "In District 6, he wants to be homeless. The family had the resources." So you know as well as I do, where does mental health come from, David? Who supports those resources in Fresno? Does Fresno City have resources? They don't. It's county mental health. That came up in your discussion on Tuesday with the District 6 candidates. So homelessness is a big issue. I do have ideas and a plan, a strategic plan, how to accomplish it. It's not just a Fresno issue, it's also a state issue, and so I'm going to be cognizant of our 7 o'clock wrap-up time, and those are my thoughts for homelessness.
All right. Raj, answer the question, and we'll wrap things up. What does District 6 need that's not getting?
So I serve on the Fresno Police Neighborhood Watch for northeast Fresno as a Board Trustee, and the captain said, "Raj, we need more people that have the mental health background so that when they, so that, so that when there is a homeless person, let's say at Cedar and Shepherd, or Champlain and Perrin, it's an unarmed individual going up to that person and trying to get them the help that they need." Homelessness, on a, on a, on a good note, is slightly down in Fresno compared to the state of California. So, and so it is, it is, you know, if you're living paycheck to paycheck and your car breaks down, or you've got a medical health issue, you know, bill issue, you could be just steps away from losing your home, right? After two or three months.
So you're saying the district needs more homeless services?
We need experts from the mental health division, not police officers that will move that individual from one place to another. We need to help them.
All right. Raj, thank you. All right, we're going to wrap things up. Nick, I'm going to give you 45 seconds or so. Give us your elevator pitch, why you're the best candidate for District 6. Why should voters choose you?
He's on mute.
All right, Nick.
Uh-oh.
All right, we'll get back to Nick. Just a sec. All right.
Sorry about that. We had, we had God's chariot, the UH1 Yankee Venom flying overhead, it's a little loud. If you repeat that question, David would be happy to answer it.
As we conclude things, give me your 45-second elevator pitch. Why are you the best candidate?
45-second elevator pitch. So I have been serving my community very vaguely for the last almost 12 years, and it's brought me more joy than almost anything else in this world. I want to keep doing that. I moved home to do that. When I was active duty in the Marine Corps, the two things that I was most proud of, in addition to being a pretty good pilot, is I ran the most successful suicide prevention program and substance abuse canceling program anywhere in the Marine Corps west of California, and I was proud of that. It takes someone with different background, a different background than we're used to. We don't need more lawyers, we need more, we don't need the same kind of people and the same names in City Hall. We need someone who's able to reach across those party lines, not take the party line every time, but reach across the aisle and deal with people honestly and actually fight for Fresno. And if you need more evidence of who's actually here to fight for District 6, well, you've got to check out our webpage at nickscamy6.com. Happy to serve, and we'll keep doing it.
Hey, Nick Richardson from Camp Hamilton, thank you so much for joining us. Raj Sodi Lane, give me your 45 seconds, why you're the best candidate.
I'm the best candidate. I'm, I'm 58 years old. I do have a long career under my belt. Three of our four children live here, my grandson lives here. I want Fresno to be the best place that it can be for our families and our grandchildren, and if I can use my finance background to help balance budgets and hold City Hall accountable for fiscal accountability, that's why I'm running for City Council.
All right. Molly Fugenis-Johnson, wrap us up. Why are you the best candidate?
I feel I'm the best candidate because I have a, my husband and I have a young family, we're not going anywhere, and we love the quality of life that we have not only in District 6 and in Fresno. My work stemming from an agriculture background leading to nonprofits, I work with a variety